Thank you. All right, I call the meeting of the Sanborn Regional School Board to order. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, manifest documents are starting to go around. Tom, would you like to start with nominations?
I would like to nominate Catherine Conti for school psychologist, Vanessa Dang for high school life science, Christine Derhak for high school math, Julia Fimmel for high school social studies, Alexandria Holmes for fourth grade teacher, and Paige Webster Scribner for high school English.
I make a motion to accept.
Second. All in favor? Unanimous? Oh, and I should have made mention earlier, Ken is excused from tonight's meeting.
Thank you. For resignations, we have three Carolyn Catterett, high school English, Laura Rolser, high school social studies, and Stacy Worcester, special education teacher coordinator.
Make a motion to accept with regrets.
Second. All in favor? Unanimous? Oh, I skipped it. Sorry, Phyllis. See, she's all, she's all over this. Do I have any action on the minutes of May fifteenth? Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. All right, and your report?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to take a moment. I actually have a few things that I need to share this evening. At the beginning of the school year last year, I talked about our challenges with academic performance. While, excuse me, all of the data and state comparables for this year are not yet available, but I wanted to share a few highlights from this year that are worth celebrating. I'm very happy to say that in grade three, seventy-one percent of our students have achieved proficiency or above in mathematics. This high percentage indicates a strong foundation in mathematical concepts at an early age, early stage, suggesting that effective teaching strategies are being implemented and that we have a strong curriculum alignment. This is not just attributed to the third grade teachers. I'd like to thank the hard work of our bakey teachers in implementing the math program effectively because that leads to success in third grade. So this is the first time these students have taken a standardized test. I want to make sure that everyone understands that I have actively talked about my concern about a message that was in our community prior to my employment here. And that message was that our students can't do it. You don't get that number without our students being able to do it. They need to know how to do it, and when we teach them how to do it, they do just fine. So, thank you. Thank you to the third grade team and the, and the teachers that helped us get there. That is a huge shift in our data. Grade four, we had fifty-seven percent of students score within proficiency in mathematics. That means at or above grade level. That's a nine percent increase. And it also highlights the need for continued focus on instructional strategies to sustain, to sustain and further the growth that we've achieved. It's important to note that the following strategies are working and need to be continued in the district. Number one, we need to continue to focus on test preparation, integrating more practice modules and test preparation activities into the regular curriculum and encouraging students to engage with these materials consistently. So these teachers this year chose to focus on what kids need to know to be successful. And as a result, they did way better. Second is professional development. We know that providing teachers, the most important person in our organization, the most important person is the teacher. A high-quality teacher can change lives. And professional development helps people to be the best that they can be. So we need to continue to provide high-quality professional development. Another important thing is parental involvement. We need to continue to engage parents in the educational process by providing them with the resources and guidance on how they can support their children's mathematics learning at home. So it's not one, it's all of these things. And fourth, we need to make decisions about instruction based on data, not opinions. We need to utilize assessment data to inform our instruction, identify trends, and implement targeted interventions for students who need additional support. We just saw in third grade that these four things work. And so I'm so grateful and thankful for the hard work of our teachers. We are really looking forward to analyzing our academic data and improving student learning, learning in mathematics and reading. And we'll give more of an update in the fall when we have all the data available. Second, I have a document that I, I never do this, but I need to for this one. So I'd like to read this letter to the, to the board and community so that everyone hears, hears the voice of the participant. Dear members of the school board and Dr. Ambrose, I began my educational journey in the fall of nineteen eighty-six. Over the last thirty-eight years, we have seen seismic shifts in education, technology, social media, the increased opportunities for students with disabilities, the list is long. What has not changed is the incredible energy that radiates from our students. That is precisely why I've remained in education through it all. I believe I was born to work with teenagers and it has been humbling to hear back over the years from so many regarding the positive impact that I've had on their lives. It's been my distinct pleasure to spend the last seven years here in the Sanborn Regional School District. At a very difficult time in my life, this community accepted me and has become my professional home. During this time, I believe I've had a positive impact on hundreds of students, staff members, and those that care for them, including parents, siblings, and friends. Oh, by the way, just to be clear, this is a letter from Dr. Dawson. Since arriving at Sanborn, I'm proud of these accomplishments, being named the finalist for New Hampshire Assistant Principal of the Year in two thousand and twenty, guiding the implementation of a new teacher evaluation system based on the work of Kim Marshall with much help from the famous Mr. Krzanowski and others, guiding alongside the superintendent and policy committee a significant review and rewrite of over one hundred district policies, developing a high-quality and trusting relationships with some of our most challenging students and parents, completing my doctorate in educational leader, leadership, reimagining, reimagining the athletic program during the fall season of two thousand and twenty during the global pandemic, bringing the athletic department in line with district policies and overall best practice in the area of student registration, budgeting and the expenditure of funds, implementing a brand-new student registration and information system allowing us to track student safety and other data, scheduling hundreds of games per season, coordinating thousands of details per season, per season, including scheduling the payment of officials and game staff. I am abbreviating a little because it's a pretty long letter. We all know Dr. Dawson. Hosting several NHIA championship events in track and field and basketball, inception of the Sanborn Track and Field Invitational, and implementation of a new communication system for student athletes. It is time, however, to move on. Over the last few years, I've begun to feel the impact of almost four decades. Simply put, I don't feel the level of joy that I once did, something I genuinely need to be effective and serve our students to the level I expect of myself. And as such, it is my intention to retire from the Sanborn District as of June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-five. I want to thank everyone in this community for allowing me to enjoy your students and for the last few years, your student athletes. I'll continue to work in some capacity after July first, two thousand and twenty-five, and I would welcome the opportunity to help make the transition easier for the district and our student athletes. Sincerely, Dr. Dawson. So I'm grateful for Dr. Dawson's years of service. And Principal Mitchison will work with the search committee to find the next athletic director for the Sanborn Regional School District, and that process will start late next fall. So, thank you, Dr. Dawson. So my final point tonight is that I want to extend my gratitude to the school board, the administration, the staff, and the students for their unwavering dedication and hard work this year. This has undoubtedly been one of the most intense and demanding school years of my professional life. We have successfully adopted a professional, a professional staff collective bargaining agreement. It was a very difficult process. We navigated staffing shortages. We made significant advancements in curriculum and instruction, among many other critical initiatives. We also had a very difficult negotiation with Fremont that unfortunately didn't go the direction that we want despite us reducing their potential tuition impact significantly by close to ten thousand dollars a student. We're sad that that didn't work out and we will miss them greatly. As we close this school year, I can confidently say that we face these challenges with integrity and professionalism. I'm immensely proud of everyone's efforts and accomplishments. And with this solid foundation, I'm really excited for the future. And I'm, I can't wait for next fall and continuing the progress and achieving even greater success this next year. We're looking forward to NIASC accreditation. Our curriculum is aligned, and we are really focused on looking at data and instruction and supporting these kids because the world they'll face is not the world that we live in today. The world that they're going to face is a world that has many jobs that were once considered menial, won't exist anymore. They have to know how to read and write to survive. And it's a moral imperative for us to make sure that they can. And I'm very inspired and very committed to making this happen for our kids. Someone said to me the other day, "We appreciate that you got your doctorate and you didn't just start looking for another job." I'm not looking for another job. I'm looking to make this awesome for these kids. And I'm inviting anyone in the community who's willing to join me to help me do it. That's where I'm at. So I can't wait for summer. Yay. Thank you. Have a great night.
All right, while we're in communications, if the board will allow me, I was asked to read a letter, a quick letter. Is that okay?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Hello, Sanborn Regional School Board. We would like to extend our gratitude for your support and generosity to our class of two thousand and twenty-four. Our students have worked extremely hard over the last four years to get to this point. They have faced many obstacles and have been able to successfully navigate their way through. We are proud of our students at Sanborn Regional High School and all they have accomplished. We are looking forward to what they have yet achieved, what they have yet achieved. Thank you again for your support of our students, recognizing and reinforcing their potential and helping them reach their dreams. And sincerely, Bob, I, I'm gonna butcher his last name. Thank you. All right. Subcommittee reports. Do we have any for tonight? Okay. All right. Student council representative.
I'm real excited to introduce Maya. She's gonna be the new school board representative for this coming year, and she's gonna be sharing the school board report tonight.
All right, thanks.
Welcome, Maya. Oh, she said welcome.
The Youth in Action students, in honor of Mental Health Awareness Month, presented to all three middle school grades. Their presentation informed students about the good mental health practices and steps to take if you are worried about yourself or someone else. The presentation incorporated phrases and themes from popular video games such as Minecraft and Roblox, which made the middle school students very interested. River Zaffeo went to a prestigious invitation-only mathematics competition this weekend, or last weekend. The biology students have been analyzing each other's DNA. They used PCR to investigate the genetics of sleep. They also tested for their ability to taste the chemical PTC and their bitter, bitter flavors. Lots of interesting results. In the baking class, they just had the spring great baking competition. Congratulations to Shayla Foster and Logan Steinell and their dark chocolate espresso cupcakes. Tomorrow, they're doing their Iron Chef competition. And then congratulations to Ben Rossi and Ben Cardoso for receiving the Joe U, the Scholar-Athlete Award. And that's all we have tonight.
Great. Thank you so much and welcome.
Welcome.
And Rebecca, we're sad to see you go.
Sad too. Thank you so much for having me during the past school year.
Thank you for being here. We really appreciate it.
You've done a fantastic job. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, first public comment. Okay.
We make sure whatever school board member you sit next to, you have the cupcakes. Covered or not, but make sure, in meeting minutes somewhere.
I heard chocolate espresso cupcakes.
All right, we will move on. Yellow presentation and out of, out of school time grant. I'm gonna need to move for this. Oh, yeah.
Good evening. For those that don't know me, my name is Carrie Ellie Violet. I am the career pathway coordinator here for Sanborn Regional. We're gonna start off this evening with a couple student presentations. So I will get that set up. I think River has decided to go first. Don't judge my tabs.
Judgment.
Hi, guys. Thank you for having me tonight. Is it, are we good? Is the mic good? Okay, cool. So I'm presenting first. This, me and a few other students were asked here today to present to you guys about art ELOs, what we did and our experience with the program. So I'm gonna be presenting to you guys my ELO for period six. I did do a second ELO as well, but this is the one that I chose to present to you guys today. So my ELO that I'm presenting about, I was a teaching ELO. I did it with Mr. Parsons in the high school. I taught his period six honors geometry class. And then I also got the opportunity partway through to go to internship at DJ Bakey with my first grade teacher, Ms. Mack. It was a very full circle moment and it was really cool. I did that for a much shorter length of time. I only did it for about a month and a half, and I went twice a week, but it was still a really cool experience. So a few of my goals were to learn about different aspects of teaching. So just learning how to lesson prep, getting experience teaching in front of a classroom, having experiences with different ages, learning how to do daily tasks as a teacher. Really, my goal overall was just to be able to experience what it was like to be a teacher, even if it was just for a semester of high school. So my first step in learning how to teach a classroom was to observe. I sat in Mr. Parsons' classroom for about a month, just watching him teach and observing how he did everything and trying to pick up on smaller intricacies that you wouldn't necessarily recognize when you're just looking at it as a student. And I, I learned a lot from doing that, but it definitely wasn't super hands-on. So eventually, I started meeting with him and talking with him about what it was like to teach and asking for some tips and talking with him about what subject or what units I would be teaching and things like that. So then, when I got to teaching my first lesson, I was very nervous. I'm not a super great public speaker. I can struggle with it sometimes, or at least I get very nervous. And so going into it, I was really nervous, but I was also comforted by the fact that the class happened to be a lot of acquaintances. It wasn't kids that I didn't know well. So that was helpful, and I had prepared a lot with Mr. Parsons. So going into it, I knew what I was doing, but it was a bit difficult for the first lesson. I learned just how much multitasking teachers have to do because, oh, boy, there's a lot of it. I really did not realize just how much teachers do for us every day. And walking out of that first lesson, I had a whole new perspective and a whole new level of appreciation for our teachers. And while I think I did okay, it definitely was clear after watching back videos that there was a lot of room for, for improvement, as you would probably expect from someone who has not gone to school for this and had never done it before. So then the next day, I got to go do my second lesson. It was a two-part lesson, so I did one on a Monday and then one on a Tuesday. And that second day, I felt much more prepared. I knew what I was walking into, and the students I was teaching also had more of an idea of what they were going to be experiencing because they knew that I would be teaching. But I don't think any of us really had an idea of what to expect. So that second lesson went much more smoothly as everyone knew what to be expecting and what to be prepared for. And I was able to walk around and help students with their homework, teach them the rest of the notes, and I felt much more supported and capable. So then, partway through the break I had between my first two lessons and my second set of lessons, I got the opportunity to go intern at DJ Bakey Elementary. Like I had mentioned before, I got to intern with my first grade teacher, and I helped the kids with reading games, writing games. I, I read some books to them, which was kind of cool. And I did a lot with literacy. And it was really interesting to go back and do the games that I played, read the books that I read from the other end. It was really interesting to be able to see what I was like as a kid and understand how crazy first graders can be. They're, they've got some energy. I can't believe that, can't believe I was like that when I was younger, but, oh, my god.
Your first grade class, I remember, was.
Yeah. Mine was, mine was particularly over the top. But it was really great to get to interact with kids of a completely different age range than the ones I had been teaching previously in the high school. It was definitely a very different experience, and I enjoyed it just as much. And I learned just as much from it, part of which being that I will never be able to teach elementary schoolers because they have too much energy. I loved them. They are all the sweetest kids, but I'm not sure that I could do that every day. Ms. Mack is a superhero. Shout out to her. She's amazing. So then, my third lesson in geometry came. This time, I had actually made the notes for it. Last year, Sanborn implemented a new math curriculum, and things were a little bit slow to start because teachers were still learning the, you know, what the curriculum was alongside us. And so by the time in the year that we got to my third and fourth lesson, teachers were having to create more note sheets than they did the year previous. And so Mr. Parsons called me in to his room and had me create the note sheet for the unit that I was teaching, which was really cool. The notes were used universally for all of the geometry classes in Sanborn and will be, will continue to be used until we inevitably switch to a new curriculum at some point. But it was a really cool experience to make them, and it was a really cool experience to get to teach notes that I made. And it felt much more, can, I felt much more connected with the students being able to be teaching something that was made by me that I could put my own spin on. So that was really cool. And then the last lesson, I could really tell a difference watching back the videos of my first lesson and my last lesson. It was only four lessons, but the diff, the difference was crazy to me. I could tell how much more confident and comfortable I felt with the class, and I could tell that the class felt more comfortable with me. I also had a few students come up to me after that last lesson and tell me how much I had helped them by teaching. Apparently, some of the kids in the class were struggling with the material, and having a student explain it to them on a student-to-student basis really helped them to grasp the material. And that felt really good to know that my learning was also helping others in my community. And yeah, it was really cool to see some of the impact that I was making by teaching, even if it was just four lessons. So in reflecting back on my goals, I, I met a lot of my goals. I got the experience, I got the experience of being a teacher for four or five days, as well as all the days that I went to Bakey. I got to do all of the fun stuff, making notes, making copies, doing Smart Pass, all the day-to-day tasks that can feel super laborious to teachers, but it was super cool to learn how to do them. I got to teach in front of classes several times. I got to get experience with kids from the ages of, what, how old are first graders? Six, seven? Seven. To, I think the oldest class in my high school class was sixteen. And it was really interesting to see the differences there, and I really enjoyed being able to get that experience. In terms of career importance, I plan to major in music education in college. And so being able to say that I have interned in multiple locations as a teacher is really a great thing to put on my resume and also a really cool thing in making me feel prepared for college. Music education programs can be really tough and really rigorous because it's basically combining two majors into one schedule. And so having the opportunity to get this experience has been really amazing for me. And so for my takeaways, I'm just really thankful that this program exists. Without it, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have had the opportunity to do a lot of the things I did this year. As I mentioned at the beginning of my presentation, I did two ELOs this year. And you all are familiar with my first one because it was a music ELO, which is the ELO that I, that I did, allowing me to go to Allstate, Jazz Allstate, National Choir, which is not one that I did through Sanborn, but another really cool opportunity, All-New England Choral Festival, and participate in Sanborn's ensembles. And this program allowed me the opportunity to become a teacher for a semester. And this program has really just given me the experience that I've needed to feel confident and prepared in my future, and I really appreciate it. So thank you, Ms. Ali, for running it, and thank you, guys, for listening.
The, the best thing that I love that River said is she learned what she didn't like and what she didn't want to do. And that's what we tell kids all the time is it's just as important to figure out what you don't want to do, to cross those off the list, and then now hopefully find those passions of what you want to do. So our next senior is Ms. Hannah Ali Violet, and she interned at Bakey in the kindergarten classroom. And she's gonna tell you a little bit. Do you want there or here?
There's good.
Okay.
Hello. I'm Hannah. I did, for my ELO, I did an internship at DJ Bakey Elementary School. I did one last year as a junior. I started that one in February, and I went three days a week, only in the afternoons. But this year, I started at the beginning of the year in September. I still went three days a week and only in the afternoons. But then in the second semester, I was able to get free period to go in the morning and then come back for fourth period and then go back again in the afternoon for the rest of the day, which I really enjoyed. I worked as a teacher's assistant in the kindergarten classroom. My community partners was Jennifer Manning, the kindergarten teacher I was working with, and Linda Johnson, the art teacher. I would assist them in classroom teaching and whatever they needed me to do, so like preparing assignments or putting things in the children's folders or just helping them with the everyday class activities. I would help with math and reading, arrival and dismissal. One of the things that I really enjoyed about my internship this year, I got to do a career day at Bakey. As you're seeing on the slideshow, I asked four people to present to the students about the different careers that they have and how they do it and why they enjoy doing it. I asked our science teacher, Doc Young, to present about what it's like being a science teacher and what he enjoys about science, and the kids really seemed to enjoy that. I decided to do a career day at Bakey because I based it off of the CK LA Amplify unit on the colonial times that they were learning about. They were learning about how, what jobs you could have during that time period, and I decided to connect the jobs you could have at that period to have in this current period that we're living in and to get them thinking about different community helpers that we have today. The career day wraps actually two days. So the first day was the career speakers, and the second day I had about three members and myself from NHS read to the children about different careers they could have, like a veterinarian, a teacher, a doctor, a police officer, and so on. I am very grateful that I've been able to do this internship for the past two years. Being in the classroom with Ms. Manning and Ms. Johnson is the best part of my day. I really enjoy being in the classroom with them, and I'm really happy that I was able to be in this internship that it helped me realize that I really enjoy the career path that I want, which is to become a board-certified behavioral analyst. When I graduate on Friday, I'll be, I'll be going off to Endicott College to study applied behavioral analysis. And I am happy I chose Endicott because Endicott is very much like the ELO program. It's very internship-based and project-based grading. And I think that having an internship during high school is going to prepare me a lot more than maybe some of my peers when I go to college, that I'm more prepared and know what to expect in a classroom setting and a school setting in general. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, now I'm gonna ask my partner in crime to come up with me. And while we're gonna tell you a little bit about our program. Which slide? Is it this one? Okay, here are some of the things that we were able to do this year, which is just amazing. So we did a senior financial fair in the fall, and they also had opportunities for career speakers during that time. And that's, that's focused on. Um, and they also had opportunities for career speakers during that time and that's, that's focused on the seniors. Um, we were able to do sophomore career interest surveys. Uh, we have uh the Seacoast School of Technology Field Trip. We had a Job Corps Field Trip, Senior Success Day, which we have in the spring. Uh, which again brought in numerous career speakers uh for the kiddos and we do like adulting 101 sessions to, you know, how do you change the tire in your car? That sort of thing, those last minute things that they might not have known. Um, again, numerous career speakers, both in person and virtual. That's a, another good thing that COVID has brought to us is some virtual career speakers. Um, we have a, a community partners breakfast that we just had recently. Um, to celebrate our community partners that work with our students, which is always a fun time. Um, we were able to have in the winter, a breakfast with some of our union, local union members in the area to talk about how we can connect and do more things with them. So that was really successful. Um, ELOs are, we have about eighty-five to ninety students that are engaged in community partner guided experiences such um fields as nursing, cosmetology, physical therapy, uh government, teaching, fire science, publishing, blacksmith, marine biology, and the list goes on and on. Um, by the time our students graduate, they, and actually this number needs to be corrected, they have over twenty career connected experiences. So when they graduate from here as seniors, so Hannah has had over twenty career connected experiences, whether it's college fair, trade shows, um, career speakers, which is an advisory requirement. So they have been able to explore multiple careers throughout their four years of high school, which I think is pretty cool. Um, we have students that have earned industry credentials that are leaving this school this, on Friday with an LNA, with an EMT certification, OSHA, serve safe, pipe fitting. Uh, we have pre-apprenticeships in electrical. We have a full apprenticeship. Uh, two kids in a full apprenticeship for electrical right now, HBAC and carpentry. So uh, we're really sending, this is probably the most students that we've had coming out with um career industry credentials and on their way. So which I think is pretty exciting. And yes, are you on this one?
So we had this afternoon, we had our ELO presentations for our students. And I sat through one presentation, the, the student traveled to Pennsylvania, worked in a lab. So she finished all of her senior year classes by the end of first semester. She connected with someone in Pennsylvania through a family friend, was able to stay at that person's house, worked in a lab, was growing cells in petri dishes and studied vascular calcification. I mean, the connections that this young lady who hasn't always loved school, but for her to be able to do everything that she needed to do in order to get to being able to have this experience. She's been planning this since last year. The excitement that I saw on her face, I've been her school counselor for four years. I, I mean, I wish that everybody in this community could have sat in on that internship presentation and just see how excited she was. And what she said to me, which I thought was amazing, is having an opportunity to study something that she loved made her remember how much she used to love learning. And it helped to, because she had started to not define herself as a student. She had started to think about herself as not somebody who is capable of going on to college. And now she's like, I can do this. I want to do this. I'm excited about this because I can do things that I love. And so she started to realize that education beyond high school can learning more about something that you have just such a passion for. Um, and that's what this ELO program does. And so I love that Hannah is starting, started to bring ELOs down to first graders and kindergartners, because that's when we need to start talking about careers. We need to expand their um experience to everything that's out there and to the things that we don't even know exist yet. So I know that I've presented to, to folks here um about a grant that we, we received for out of school time um opportunities. And what we did this year is we ran programs at the middle school for our middle school students in, in topics that would lead to uh high school elective offering, which then leads to that industry credential that Carrie talked about. And so we ran woodworking, robotics, aviation, baking and babysitting. Uh, and again, these are classes that students can then take at the high school level and when they leave, if they continue to be excited about that, they can leave here with credentials that will help them get a job. They are credentials that are recognized in the industry. That's why we're working with union folks to say, what do you want your students to know? We know that there are, it's sometimes hard to find folks in the trades. And so we work with our union people to say, what do you need your stu, your employees, your future employees to know in order to be prepared to become a worker for your company? And so we're partnering with them to develop those um industry credentials. And when we work with this grant, it allows us to pay for the price so that it's not prohibited. If somebody doesn't have money to pay for an OSHA course or doesn't have money to pay the hundred and fifty dollars for a serve safe course. And now that student can work in a restaurant directly out of high school with that um certification that shows that he has some experience. So it's just been amazing and the middle school kids were so excited to come after school to be in high school classrooms, sometimes working with high school teachers on things that they know they're going to be able to expand their knowledge. Flying drones around the school, they're building things in the shop. They're building their resume to become a babysitter, um, having some iron chef and cooking, espresso cupcakes. Who doesn't love that? And we need, all need more espresso chocolate cupcakes in our lives. Um, so the more people who know how to bake that, the better this community is. So it, it's just an incredible opportunity and I think it's probably one of the best um pots of Sanborn.
And another cool thing about this grant is we were able to pay for four students to take an EMT class on their own time. Um, we have one that has finished all her testing. She is complete in a certified EMT. We have three others that are in the in the midst of taking their testing. They have them all um scheduled, but to graduate high school and this young lady in particular has her LNA and her EMT at eighteen years old.
Eighteen, leaving high school.
So how did middle school students find out about all these ELOs?
There was a lot of uh flyers and advertising and it was in newsletters and we, yeah, working with Matt.
Yep.
Okay.
To make sure and we put.
So this coming year it'll be the same process? They'll find out the new students coming?
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for us?
Cause we could talk all day long. I really feel like I have the best job ever.
Yeah.
I really do.
This is amazing. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Alright.
Awesome.
Awesome.
Yep.
Yep.
You guys should stay where you are because I'm gonna present.
Get in a chair. Oh, wait.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't think I get off.
You're allowed to move.
Oh. You're safe, I'm on a chair.
Alright, no dropping. Alright, thank you.
And free cupcakes.
I want cupcakes now.
Break up, chocolate espresso?
I know, right?
Come on.
As they'll be here in August.
Oh.
Of course, just for you guys.
You'll make so many friends, I promise you.
Well, thank you, everyone. I, I uh yeah, I, I have uh, we had originally scheduled that I would present this to staff today at the middle and high school prior to this presentation. But we had a Pops Band Concert, so we all had to go to the Pops Band Concert. I'm going to present to staff uh during the, the days after school gets out. So I, I'm very happy to share with you. Sorry, I seem to be having. Thanks, Tom.
Wow. Great, we're done.
I don't know why it's not.
There it is.
I thought that was.
Just a second.
Okay.
You started at the end.
I did start at the end, flipped to the end.
A lot of slides, Tom.
It's a lot of slides.
Wow.
That's why I was thinking.
Yep.
Oh goodness. Northeastern, what a nice.
Alright. So as all of you know, in, in uh March, I received my doctorate from Northeastern University and I studied the teaching of reading at the high school level. And so this presentation is titled, What Teachers Say About Teaching Reading At The High School Level? And I did an action research study and I'll explain that in a moment. So this presentation has an introduction, a description of the research. We'll talk about what's called Cycle One, Cycle Two, the findings, the implementation, implications and the recommendations. So the first step is defining the problem of practice. So I looked at the teaching of reading at the K-five level. I've had a lot of experience in that because I was a K-two principal who trained at Columbia University for almost ten years. And I noticed that the teachers at the K-five level were getting significant professional development in the teaching of reading. Well, when you combine that knowledge with the NAEP data, which is the National Assessment of Educational Progress, it shows that at least thirty-six percent of students cannot read at grade level by the end of eighth grade. So what happens to these students and are the teachers prepared at the high school level to teach them reading? Because they're coming through the door not able to read. So that was the, the crux of the, the study. So the purpose of the study was to understand what teachers say is needed to support the teaching of reading at the high school level. If you think back to what I said earlier in my presentation or my uh superintendent's report, this is about the teachers and what they feel they need. The research question was what do teachers say is needed to support the teaching of reading at the high school level at one school district in the northeast of the US? Very closely related to the purpose. Qualitative research, specifically participatory action research, was selected for the study because qualitative research focuses on harnessing the knowledge of the participants to solve complicated problems. So in Cycle One, I did participant interviews and focus groups and then in Cycle Two, we worked together to solve problems. In Cycle One, I had a number of teachers. I won't go through all the details because it will take a while. If anyone would like these slides, I'm happy to share them after. But a number of teachers participated in Cycle One. I did interviews, I did observations, I analyzed documents within the district. I conducted a teacher focus group, a parent focus group and a student focus group. So it's important to note that parents and students were included in Cycle One, which is where you validate whether or not the question is worth a study. I then transcribed all of these and coded them by color to figure out what we could do, what parents could do, what students could do, what teachers could do. And I came up with the following themes. Number one, the implementation of reading instructional practices such as whole class novels, book clubs and the use of choice books as instructional strategies were important to, to everyone that I interviewed in Cycle One. The instructional vocabulary was a problem for the district at the high school level. The use of conferring, which means that you meet with students in small, small individual or small groups to talk about their reading, was not consistently done in the district. And the need for time and support as a team to discuss instruction, assessment, curriculum alignment and academic intervention. So the teachers needed time to talk, is what they reported and, and uh that was important. Uh, the participants also expressed a desire for professional, sorry, I hit the button by accident. A desire for professional development in the instruction of reading with an emphasis on learning how to support students who are struggling to read. So these are the things that the participants in Cycle One told me were important before we developed what's called the Action Step. Here's what they had to say. Jennifer said that choice reading is allowing students to have the voice of choosing whatever book they want. While Kate considered a book choice as the majority of the class was picking what they want, meaning that they voted and the class all read the same book. And Harry said, you're conferencing with them constantly and trying to measure where they're at and help them move forward. Susan holds a master's degree in special education and noted that I didn't learn it, the teaching of reading in my undergrad as much. Kathy said, I was on a team at the Cooperative Middle School and the team had their team time, so that's beautiful, but that's ideal. And Kate said vocabulary is the basis for strong reading. Because if you don't know what the words are, you're going to skip over them. And when you skip over the words, you lose comprehension. So the Cycle One findings, the themes were those instructional practices, the instruction of vocabulary, conferring as a method of assessment and the need for time for uh people to, to uh have time to support and talk and professional development. When you combine the themes with the research, which is the literature, every high school teacher should be a teacher of reading. I remember back to the data, thirty-six percent of students walking into the high school at a minimum aren't reading at grade level. Combine that with professional learning. Um, the literature said that teachers need to have a community of learners to work together and they need support from school leader, leaders. So that led me to the Cycle One findings. So the first part of the research was that teachers need more PD in teaching reading. They need training and support for teaching struggling readers. And they need support for opportunities for teachers to share ideas, resources and strategies, AKA work together. So that led me to the Action Step. Collaboration, gaining new knowledge and skills and creating a digital handbook for the teaching of reading at the high school level. I'll talk about that a lot more in just a minute. So the purpose of the Action Step was to use the structure of what's called a professional learning community with high school level teachers to support the development of their knowledge and skills in the teaching of reading. A professional learning community is a fancy way of saying, kind of working the way doctors work. If you have a patient that isn't getting better and five doctors get together and review the information, they all offer perspectives to help the, the doctor that's helping the patient to improve. That's what a professional learning community is supposed to do. Um, I was happy to say that the, the participants, the teacher participants increased during the Cycle Two. Um, three teachers that didn't participate in Cycle One asked to join because they wanted to be involved. So we had a significant number of folks at the high school from English language arts teachers, our librarian, reading interventionists. It was really fun. So this is what we did. First, we looked at the Cycle One findings and we discussed the norms of the group and discussed the work. Having healthy norms helps a team to function, especially in a professional learning community. We had an overview of the teaching of readings for students at the high school level. So we had a specialist explain to teachers about the process of teaching reading. In particular, we used the model called Scarborough's Reading Rope, but I won't go into the details of that. We worked with the reading specialists to develop some lessons to teach at the high school level. And then we shared the lesson outcomes, the pros and cons and revised the lessons with more expert feedback. And then we co-created a digital handbook or repository to share those lessons with the teachers at the high school so that they could um use them in any course or any discipline. So we also developed uh success criteria for the Action Step. Teachers will indicate that they have an understanding of how to support students in reading. Teachers will know how to create lesson plans to support the teaching of reading and those plans will contain age-appropriate strategies. And finally, that co-creation of the digital handbook that we talked about before, which looked like this. So you can see here that you have a page that defines one strand of what is called Scarborough's Reading Rope. There are a number of criteria for teaching reading. Um, you have the, the, the definition of background knowledge. And then on the left, you can get more information at the, about the definition and major understanding in the lower left corner. And then there are resources with actual lessons that teachers can teach for this topic. Now, it's important to remember, this was just a starting point. This is a living document that we hope will grow over time. Here's another one, vocabulary knowledge. So it defines vocabulary knowledge for the teacher. Same thing, resources. And language structures. It's the ways that the arrangement of words within a sentence can impact the meaning of a message. So we need to teach kids these things and how to solve things that they don't know when they're reading text. So here's what the teachers had to say. Thinking about how to like hone the parts of the brain that have to come together to make reading happen. I think it just allowed me to see it in a different light. Harry said, I was reading an article with my students in my sports class and I knew exactly what their level of understanding was. Laura said, we all work together to help each other come up with lessons. And Kathy shared that she enjoyed yesterday when people were adding to the document, a digital handbook and we were talking about the tools. Kate said, I'm modeling my reading techniques and strategies. I never would have known I was kind of doing these things the right way had we not been working together. Sorry, had we not kind of been working together. When you transcribe people talking, it's kind of fun. You get lots of likes and kinds in there. So during the Action Step, we did a lot of data collection. We had participant meeting notes from PLC meetings, researcher field notes, exit tickets, interviews and focus groups. This is what it looked like. I coded each interview manually. So I transcribed it all from everything that I did. And then I created these charts called a code book. So you have the example in the left, which is the exact transcription of the person, person's statement. And then the line number from the transcription so that you can look it up quickly. And then the line number from the transcription so that you can look it up quickly for context should you need to. A definition which typically says instances where participants talk about. Remember, it's about the teachers. And then the code, so in this code, they wanted more time to talk about teaching. So I found what I did then was I laid, I took all of these sheets and laid them out and color coded them by theme. This is what it looked like, that was one table, there were four. And then we combined the themes and the literature to have the findings. So these themes showed that that teachers wanted time to share and listen. They need instructional strategies to teach students how to read, and they need differentiated professional development. This is what they said. When you combine that with the literature, which says that every high school teacher should be a teacher of reading, that teachers need professional learning that's ongoing and embedded in their work, that teachers are a community of learners that need time to talk together, and they most importantly need support from their school leaders. We came up with this. So if you look at the top of the graphic, this is the findings. To start, you first have to recognize that there's a need for teaching reading at the high school level. There has been a paradigm shift in education where it used to be you go to high school, I teach it, you either get it or you don't. Those days are over. If you don't get it, I have to help you. And the first thing to helping someone is teaching them how to read. So first, you need to recognize that there's a problem, and then you need support from your school leaders. Principals, assistant principals, curriculum directors, me. Then you have an entry point. So one entry point could be having time to talk and listen. So a group of three or four teachers get together, talk about teaching reading, and then they get curious about the other parts. You could also learn some instructional strategies and implement those, and then talk to other teachers about those instructional strategies. Or you could get professional development. Any one of those entry points is valid, as long as you have support from school leaders and that you recognize that you need to teach reading. So here's what they had to say about finding one. Every high school teacher should be a teacher of reading. Planning to teach reading is probably one of the smartest things we're doing, Susan. I learned reading is a combination of skills, Harry. I've been here nine years, this is the first time that we're really like getting into productive conversations about this stuff, Jennifer. Teachers need differentiated and ongoing professional development in the teaching of reading. This is why when you ask me about the budget, the professional development lines are critical. I would like more reading about reading and more reading about the teaching of reading. I'd never seen it, reading skills laid out maybe in those terms, and it made something click for me, Jennifer. And Harry said, I want to know what it looks like for schools to go from where we are to a better place. Teachers benefit from a community of learners who are focused on supporting student reading in high school. Here's what the teachers had to say. More collaborative time as a team and time to talk and listen. We need to actually make more time for working on improving the teaching of reading at the high school level. And the more time that we're able to like spend as a group talking about this, the more of those ideas get shared, Ron. Finding four, high school teachers rely on school leaders such as superintendents, administrators, curriculum directors, et cetera, to enable creative scheduling, the purchase of resources, and a culture of safety in which to take risks. That's a loaded statement. You can't get better at teaching if you don't feel safe to say that you don't know how to teach something. There's so much going on all the time that we rarely get to talk, Jennifer. With what we have right now, there's not a lot that we can do to make it better. And we need to actually make more time for working on improving the teaching of reading at the high school level. So it's really important for everyone here to understand that this study led me to some very important implications. Number one, the study was a call to action. Um, it's a call to action for teachers and school leaders. We have to teach reading at the high school level, and we need help to do it. We have to help each other. Colleges and universities, including researchers, need to create resources for the teaching of reading at the high school level and emphasize to education majors that teaching reading at the high school level is critical. They also need to provide research about which strategies help us to do that. And finally, publishers of books and curriculum need to need to create books for high school that aren't just for English language learners, but for students who aren't doing well with reading at the high school level. Because if they don't have high interest text, they're not going to read. So the recommendations from the study are our schools should continue to build on the digital handbook, and they are. And Principal Mitchinson has has worked hard this year with her team. We'll talk about that in just a minute. Administration and leadership need to support the teaching staff. We are working very hard on that, and the new structure of administration at the six through twelve is going to help us to achieve this goal. Staff need time to meet. The new collective bargaining agreement gives us a PLC one night a week after school without interruption. Students aren't in the building. And we have staff meetings on Wednesday nights, we've taken action on this. And we need to teach reading across the curriculum. Some some great teachers this year have worked really hard to teach reading in science, math, social studies, and ELA. We also had Jack Kelly teaching reading in shop class. Super excited, right? It needs to be everywhere all the time because you have content-specific vocabulary in addition to the core skills of comprehension and inferencing and predicting. So I just wanted to thank you all for taking a few minutes. I I did just go through thirty one slides in just a few minutes, and the paper is very long and boring. Um, I don't expect that people would want to necessarily read every single line of what everyone said in the analysis, but this is kind of the gist of it. If you are interested in reading it, I highly recommend that you read chapter four because chapter four is kind of the results chapter. Chapter uh, chapter one lays out the context. Chapter two lays out the methods, and chapter three is the literature review, which I did go all the way back to um, the teaching of reading prior to recorded history. Our societies for, since the beginning of society, has taught children how to read. Because our society will not survive without it. We can't survive if you can't read. You have to be able to know the history of what happened to your community or your, 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 your country or the world and understand the 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 way that things work and learn independently, it's just required. So um, I I think that that was an interesting thing um, for me as an educator, to look back at the laws and the way that our our public schools were created in the United States for the specific purpose of educating citizens so that they could run the country. Well, now, that's not the purpose. The purpose is the country won't function if people can't learn independently. And the first step to learning independently is being able to read. Do you have any questions? And I boy all to sleep, I'm sorry.
Very well done.
Thank you. Yeah.
The very beginning.
Yep.
You had a slide that said that most professional development time where the teaching of reading happens at K through five.
Yes.
And then enter in high school. There's a guess, so there's a middle school gap.
Yes. Yes, it starts, um, and you can see the data nationally dips in seventh grade. And one of the, one of the variables that's really important in addition to professional development for the teachers to have the skill for how to teach reading is first making sure that they believe that it's important. So 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 if you go back to the grid here, this is the key, this is the the big, the first step is recognizing that you have to teach reading. And and Mike, I would say it's fair to say without having done, I did not include grade six and seven and eight in this. But it's fair to say, having been a middle school person myself, that it does start to happen around seventh grade that kids lose interest in reading, which means that teachers need specific skills to engage them in teaching and learning how to read in seventh grade, right? So so the first step is recognizing the need, but the second step is the support from school leaders because that's how you get the PD. Because the school leaders have the the financial component, and that includes you as a group, as a board. You you have to help meet a budget to have money for professional development for these folks so that they can grow. And and then also they have to engage in it in a differentiated way. So what that means in a fancy way is Heather might know how to teach this part of reading really well, but not another part. And she needs help for her part that she's struggling with, whereas Jeremiah might need help in a different area. Right? And sometimes Jeremiah might talk to Heather about what she knows and learn from her. It doesn't always have to be a fancy PD person either. It's a combination of using the local resources and the the resources that are available professionally. So one person that I've contacted, she read the paper, and she she and I are collaborating is Penny Kittles. She's a nationally recognized high school literacy expert who lives in New Hampshire. So she and I have been talking pretty much weekly about next steps. So I I think that she's going to come and help us if we can, if we can work it out schedule-wise and money-wise. And and this is why CKLA is so important, because it aligns the curriculum and gives teachers professional development. But it also focuses on on engaging the kids in high-interest topics. So it's got to be interesting, it's got to be relevant, and it's got to be, it's got to be at the right reading level. Well, the problem is, is when kids get to high school, the material that's interesting at their right reading level, there's that piece about the implications is a big one, right? That that we're not creating books of high interest for kids at a lower level reading at the high school level. It's a national crisis, like it's a big problem.
As a parent of middle schoolers, I like, I can totally see the importance of this and see with my own children of how important this is that it really is like to bring up the subject of learning it in high school.
I think it's important to look at, like, I think we have a lot of our students read like Shakespeare or nineteen eighty-four or Fahrenheit fifty-one, like, because we want, because it's like critical thinking, but the kids also want to read things that are interesting. So when we include things like Hunger Games or Divergent, they teach some of the same things, but they do it with more. I think we need more of that like that. We can teach those like tough books, but also things that the kids will enjoy and read.
We had great conversations about balancing what what we would define as choice books, which is uh, called a book club or or a full choice, which means that you you have a topic that you're studying, but you give the kids so many options of books on. An easy one to talk about would be like World War Two or World War One or or um, any specific topic. You might have thirty different books, but the kids get to pick the one they want to read. And that that that's a really important thing that we've had a lot of conversations and will be having many more future.
There's about twenty, twenty young adult books about the Holocaust.
Yep.
Twenty.
Right.
Just that that any like which, and kids can learn so much about that just from like The Book Thief is one prime example of that.
I agree. And the staff agree. They're they're just trying to figure out what the parameters are because sometimes having the whole class read one book.
Oh, yeah.
Have conversations in context. And then at other times, having them read different books and talk about their point of view is important too. But the real thing we're teaching here is critical thinking. That's really the goal. The goal, the goal is teaching reading is a means to teach people how to think critically and learn independently. That's the real goal.
But I think it's um, so Mr. Beebe is doing, they're doing Animal Farm, but they're doing a podcast. So each of them is a different character in nineteen eighty-four. I mean, in um, in Animal Farm, but so they're making it fun, like.
Yeah, that's it.
That's what what you need to do.
Yep, we need to make it, I agree completely, thank you. Any other questions? Yeah.
Yeah, Tom, I'm uh, I'm I'm interested to hear uh, after the first trimester of this coming school year, after the teachers have a full trimester of PLCs.
Yep.
I'm interested to hear the same feedback we talked that we heard prior to them having PLCs and then after PLCs and to see what difference that.
Yeah, so so just so you know, the PLCs exist right now, but they're during the school day and they they're tricky. The consistency will be better. And and I forgot to say that the good news is that even just after the last six months, our ELA scores at high school went up by ten percent on the SAT. So we went from forty-five percent to fifty-five percent, and that was just in six months. So this piece about explicit vocabulary instruction and the conversations is important, and I'll be happy to check in with the teachers and report that.
Yeah, because it's a new construct that they'll be.
Yeah, the after-school contract construct is new, and and I'm hoping that that will allow our administrators to be present for these conversations, including Christine and myself, to hear what teachers need and say so that we're working collaboratively with them. Whereas during the day, you know, the principal gets pulled to discipline or something happens in the parking lot or you you when it's after school and it's over, it there should be a greater engagement by everyone in the school community, which helps us with this first entry point, support from school leaders.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. Thanks for letting me do this. I I kept putting it off because our schedule was so full, and I was finally like, we got to get this done.
Hmm.
Okay. Yeah.
Thank you, Dr.
You're welcome.
All right, well, thank you to everyone that attended tonight, it was all really amazing. Oh, yes, thank you. All right. I know. All right. All right, so we have, all right, selection of auditor, Matt.
Yes, so our five-year contract for audit services with Bishan Cluke has ended, and we went out for a bid for their services. Um, we contacted four auditors directly as well as advertised in Eagle Tribune. Um, four, uh, two out of the four, um, provided us with bids, two declined. Uh, Mr. Angel's very familiar with all four firms and um, would be comfortable with any of them. But as you can see from the bids, um, our current auditor, Bishan, came in significantly lower than than Markham. And uh, based on uh, that and the fact that we've been satisfied with their work over the last few years, um, you know, we we recommend the school board uh, that we continue with Bishan Cluke uh, for our uh, audit services for the next three years with the option of extending that to additional beyond that.
Can I just make a quick comment?
Yeah.
Uh, I I love the format of this, the way this is presented, and I think it would be good for us to do this for bids in the future.
That's Matt Angel's format.
Right, but I love the format, though. I just wanted to say that this is really helpful to see that we reached out to two groups that declined, and then the other two groups bid and what the bid, format of this is very helpful for me.
Any questions from the board?
No, you guys are comfortable uh, providing us with quality work, and I don't see any reason to.
Yeah, Matt, Matt and I have spoken about it, and it's an area Matt was in prior to being here at Sanborn and as an auditor and worked for at least one of these firms, and he speaks highly of Bishan, so um, I I would recommend continuing with that relationship.
Do I have a motion?
Can I make a motion to approve Marshaun? I'm saying it right, for our auditor for the next three years?
Second.
I just think we have to amend it, sorry, because it's three years with two optional years, right?
Oh, right.
Okay, um, what do I need to amend this to, two years?
Three, three years with two optional years.
Okay, I make a motion to approve with three years, then optional two years with Marshaun.
And I amend my second.
Bishan. All right. Um, okay, so any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, great. Auditor engagement letter.
So in light of that approval, we have the audit engagement letter from Bishan, which outlines the services that they'll provide, um, as well as the opinions that they're gonna um, provide the district on our financial statements. And those findings will obviously be communicated to the district and the school board in a in a management recommendation letter um, after they've completed their audits. Um, so really, um, again, at this time, really just need the board um, to make a motion for for Ms. Dutton to sign the letter. Um, or if there are questions on the engagement letter, if you've had a chance to read it, we can field those as well.
Does anyone have any questions for Matt and Matt on the engagement letter? Nope. All right, can I get a motion?
Make a motion to authorize Chair Dutton to sign the engagement letter with the auditor.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you. All right, acceptance of the high school track and field donation.
Yes, our athletic director, Dr. Dawson, is asked or is asking the school board to accept the following donation. It's from Larry Martin, who, uh, in Dr. Dawson's words, um, it's a former track coach from Lundonary High School and a bit of a legend in New Hampshire as a track and field coach. Um, and he's made a generous donation to our track and field program in the amount of six hundred and four dollars. So um, you know, Dr. Dawson is asking for the school board to accept this donation for our track program.
Make a motion to accept with uh, thank you to Mr. Martin.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Huge thank you.
Well, Dr. Dawson did say he would um, send along a thank you to Larry Martin. Yep, he'll do that for us.
Yes, thank you.
All right, all in favor? Unanimous. All right, um, selection of school board member to approve utility bids for heating oil, propane, and electricity.
Yeah, so um, with energy places, prices, as you all know, just from purchasing private for your own homes fluctuate, you know, day by day, minute by With energy plays prices, as you all know, just from purchasing private for your own homes fluctuate, you know, day by day, minute by minute, depends upon what you're purchasing. And energy providers only provide quotes for that day. In some cases, um, you know, electricity just for an hour or so. So as a result, there's not enough time, obviously, for, uh, the business office to get school board approval. With the ability to lock in those rates. So historically, the board has authorized the finance, um. Committee chair to review the proposals that we obtain and authorize them on behalf of the board. So, uh, we're anticipating selecting heating oil provider this summer. Electricity will be sometime in the fall. So, uh, even though. There'll be score school board meetings, there's still not enough time to turn that around. So we need Mr. Nalt to, uh, you know, approve that selection, review it and approve it. So I guess, you know, we're we're recommending the school board authorize, um, our facility and finance committee chair to review the energy proposals that we bring forward. And then select a vendor based on our needs. And then obviously what was determined will be reported out in the next board meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Good luck to you, Jeremiah.
Mind your own business and all of a sudden the text comes in.
Can we do it now?
I'll give you a heads up, Jeremiah.
Saturday afternoon at three thirty.
Right.
Favor. All right, unanimous. Um, and you can just note that Heather had to step out for a minute for that vote. Um. So it.
All right, look. We should probably.
We could, we could.
Can't wait.
Going and just vote on that one.
Might just come back to it.
Yeah.
You could do a majority vote, yes.
Yep.
With an abstention because she wasn't in the.
Yeah, that's fine.
Armistice. Um. Authorized playground fence for Seacoast Classical.
Yes, so Seacoast Classical Academy, um. Is moving into our Newton campus. Um, we'd like to install a fence around the playground area, which is adjacent to the driveway, immediately adjacent to it. On page two of this document, um, there's a map that shows it. If you're familiar with the campus, it's right near the driveway. And per section. Ten point two of our lease agreement, uh, this requires, uh, school board approval. SCA is responsible for funding this project, but again, um, since they're constructing on our property, they need, um, your approval to do so. Should we wait for? This, no.
Sorry, and where does the fence go?
It's the yellow.
The yellow at the very top of the picture?
Oh, yellow trapezoid.
At the bottom.
No.
No, not the bottom. Yeah. Yeah, this this was a, um, a sketch provided by SCA. So, yeah, so, um. Kind of up and to the left from that yellow trapezoid is, uh, our, um, Memorial School.
Yep.
As you come down, um.
Yeah, I just want to make sure there's two yellow boxes. One of them is very oddly shaped over the field.
Yes, good call. Yes. Yeah, we're not putting in a.
They're both up.
Not putting in like a three acre. Or whatever that would be.
That's just the area they have.
But it is immediately along the roadway, which has a fair amount of traffic, and I can see why they wouldn't want to.
What kind of, what kind of, where's the, is there a thing? What kind of fence it's gonna be?
Yeah.
It looks to me like there's like a, is there a big tree or something? Is that just like this? I mean, I assume there's area.
Is Mr. Doyle still here?
I think that's a shadow.
No.
Oh, is that a shadow?
Shadow. Yeah, I I I've been down there a number of times since taking this position. I just don't remember every detail of that.
You're not looking at cut down lots of trees, are you?
No, no, they're not. They're not cutting down any trees, actually. And I, um, I don't believe there's any trees in that area, right?
I don't believe there are any.
Like within the fenced and.
That tree is very close to the parking area, like right off. But most of that is shadow. You can tell from the rest of the shadows, the direction that they're going to the building. Yeah, it's over here and that's.
Yeah, I I.
Tell by the.
Tree that was gonna have to be taken.
I think we need to dig into this a lot more. I don't think that's the one. I think the tree you were talking about is in the loop.
We charm a.
But I think we we're not cutting it down. So. So I the the area that they're talking about, I think at one time when the old middle school was there, there was like a volleyball net back there. So it's an open spot. Um, and this is the area that's out behind the garage.
We don't know what kind of fence.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be a chain link fence. Yeah, standard playground. Yeah.
It's gonna have to meet code and all that.
Yes.
Like some acceptable height.
Yeah, exactly. So the idea that they gave us is is to prevent the kids from wandering onto the the roadway and, um, interfering with traffic.
I think I think what we're looking for is approval for them to put a fence up. Which I think we can say we can give them that approval pending, uh, final approval of plans or, I mean, like. We won't see, uh, uh, it's like there's some concern over what's that type of fences going there?
I just, I I would think that they would. Specify what it is in the request, right?
Yeah, when you're leasing, if you're gonna put up something that's gonna be permanent.
Yeah, a little more.
We would want to know, right? And I think they're probably gonna do something completely reasonable and it's gonna be great. But if they decide to put up a twenty-foot fence that doesn't fit with the character of the school, that we might want to know.
Yeah.
Right?
I think Doyle said, you know, code, right?
Yeah, it'd have to be a code and it's gonna have to meet whatever the insurance requirements are that. They have.
Sure.
And I know we reviewed the playground code recently and it's pretty strict.
It is.
If I remember correctly.
If you're concerned, you can always make a school board member responsible for reviewing it before it goes in.
Yeah, I think I was gonna say we'll do the same thing. Let's just have somebody.
A school board member.
Yeah.
Final authorization after review.
I'm sorry, did you say you wanted to review the final?
Sure, I'll review it.
Probably will.
Volunteers tribute. By like. Couple of feet.
We can work together.
We both, yeah, we we both walk there and meet there at the same time. Here, I'm sorry I had to step out.
That's okay.
So what what is the motion for the fence? Uh, we have not made.
I'm about to make it.
Okay.
So.
You didn't miss that yet. You're good.
So the motion, uh, that I will propose is that we approve SCA putting up a fence. Uh, with the final approval of the fence, uh, structure, uh, and kind being looked at by the Chair Dawn, uh, prior to the fence going up.
I'll second that.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Yeah, I'm in favor.
Do we want to go back to the last vote now that Heather's?
Um. Heather, do you want us to re-vote? Um, we voted to approve, the majority voted to approve. Uh, Jeremiah to, uh, oversee and approve utility bids.
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, um, so do you want to re-vote on it so that you can be part of it? Okay.
Appreciate that.
Okay, great. All right, um, so if we could do a re-vote, uh, the the. Motion, um. For Jeremiah to approve utility bids, um, that would be fabulous. Uh, so Heather, did you have any discussion that you wanted to add?
No.
Okay. All right, all in favor? Unanimous. All right. Okay, Gordon. You're so excited.
Oh.
He's not wearing a panda outfit.
Yeah.
Panda dancing.
That's all over.
I know.
Oh.
This is, we started.
We had recital on.
Don't worry, we have video evidence.
And we want.
Oh, there is.
Yeah, there.
I know, I've seen it.
Oh, yeah, I did share.
Do we need a bathroom break first?
Don't they tape every recital?
Yeah, oh, it's.
Is this?
My wife recorded. This particular dance and.
Heather, just for the record, Gordon's got some deep and his.
I do.
Happened.
I'm supposed to.
Don't count it.
They're all like thirty.
All right, so real quick. August.
August, I'll bring you cupcakes.
Um, so real quick, because I know this could potentially take a little time, um, unless everybody's extremely comfortable. Um, there was question if we should take a quick bathroom break first. Or does anyone think we need that?
Okay, sorry, Gordon. Okay. I I didn't think of that. It was. Sorry, Gordon, starving, so we're.
Yeah.
We're munching. I promise we're listening. Maya, feel free to grab something.
Are you starting with?
I don't know.
Okay.
Do we? Want to just go down the list or just kinda?
Ever you. Prefer, whatever your preferences, you start.
Um. Let's just go down the list, I guess. So the first one's, uh, SOFO switch purchase. This is for the entire network. Uh, currently, we. Have, um, they'll purchased either five or six years ago refurbished. So I don't really know the exact age of them. Um, I am looking to replace them all. I went through E-rate, which, uh, we we get basically grant funding. Uh, applied. I think it's sick, a six-year cycle. Um, and this is where we get some rebates with our internet connections. Uh, so we did a a bid process through them. Two different bids. That came in and. The, uh, the bid with. Within the document is the, uh, the recommended bid. Um, the company currently, uh. Helps support me with. Any issues that arise and any new implementation, so. I am, uh, confident in their, um, services and and what they can provide. Any questions?
Um, does anyone have questions for Gordon on this?
And with the E-rate as well, it's, uh, forty percent off of eligible. Purchases, so out of the hundred and sixty-two thousand. I actually found out that only five thousand six hundred ninety-nine were not eligible. So the amount back is actually almost seventy-three thousand. Through E-rate.
And Gordon, you're rec- we're recommending.
Three thousand? Yeah, sorry.
Gordon, I just a quick, um. I think it's important to you. Can you turn on the projector? But I want to show this to the. Board so that they can see.
Oh, there it is. I couldn't find the right. Because they're in one order here, but then.
So I think it's it's important for everyone to see. That there are a number of technology purchases and as we have discussed over the years. The 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 one budget that I've not passed in the time I've worked. Had technology for a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars above the default and it failed by ten votes. So that was, uh, my second, I think my second or third year here. So what what I'm saying to you is these things need to go in the budget. However, when you look at the whole picture. Of the budget, we we have been incredibly conservative. And we have saved. Um, a significant amount of money. So we currently have af- if you withhold, which we recommend that you do, the two point five percent that you can retain for emergencies. Will still have one million five hundred and seventy-two thousand ninety-three dollars and forty-one cents. We are recommending that you. Fund the switches at a cost of one hundred and thirteen thousand five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty cents. Teacher laptops at a cost of sixty-four thousand one, one hundred and, sorry, sixty, I need new glasses. Um, and the the PA system upgrades because we're having major problems with the PA. That would bring that total that is given back to taxpayers down to one million three hundred and nineteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-four. The facilities use revolving fund, you already made a purchase out of at the last meeting. But if we put the camera servers in there and the lab PCs. Which are also in the list of proposals that Gordon has for you this evening. That would put that account at ninety-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight, which as superintendent makes me bristle a little bit, but I understand it gets replenished from the rent in the SLC and the SCA. So I I I'm fine with this recommendation. I I I think instead of like combing through every one of these and doing all nine of them, what we should do is talk about if anyone has any questions about any one of them. Because the other way we can do this is you can, I want you to look at it as a whole picture, not just. One purchase at a time and approve one purchase at a time. These things are things that we need to run the district. We we we. I do not believe as a leader that I should just pay for these things out of the budget, even though I have the legal authority to do so. I believe that the right thing to do is to bring it to you as a board, get approval. And begin the process of budgeting for next year by saying these are things that should be normally in the budget. But they're not. And it's the same thing when you need a roof at Memorial. Right? We could pay for a roof at Memorial, but I'm not going to do that without bringing it to you because I believe in transparency. And I believe in the relationship with the taxpayers that they see what we're spending this money on. You can't run a school system without computers. You can't run a school system without the internet. Um, and then the other thing is. If you look at the the right-hand column, uh, we were, I'm sorry, we were able to pay for a hundred and fifty student laptops with the ESER grant. Thank you, Christine DeRocher. Right? It was the last pot of money that we had from ESER. That's approved and done, so we saved forty thousand dollars. And then the lab PCs, we were able to put five thousand two hundred and fifty into ESER, which lowered that from seventeen and change seventeen-five down to twelve thousand five hundred. Uh, sorry, twelve thousand two hundred and fifty, which is in column C, row nine. Right? So the the bottom line is that. We're asking for the board to approve these purchases as proposed on this grid right here. So instead of going through each one, I guess what I would say is. I'll take questions and I do want to be clear that for the PA system, as we expressed at the last board meeting. We did not go out to bid for that seventy-four thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. Because we want to use the vendor that is currently servicing Memorial and Bakey and has already bailed us out with the high school PA system. For free or very, Gordon, was that free or was it? Did we pay them to do that?
No, we we paid, but.
Okay, all right, thank you. We paid. But they did it outside of their service contract because the 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 PA system at the middle and high school for safety reasons. We have to be able to make announcements if there's a problem in the building. And there are speakers that are failing in the ceilings. The building is almost twenty years old. I I'm certainly fine if the board says. No, we want you to go out to bid for that. We will go out to bid for it. We're asking you to waive the policy for the bid for that one item. Because we have a good relationship with an already existing vendor that's a part of the district. If the board doesn't want to do that, it will delay the project and it will get done around Christmas time. And that's okay. But we we don't want to do that. We're asking you not to do that, but if you choose to, we understand, we support you.
But why do we think, why do we think it would be delayed to Christmas time?
Because we're we're, uh, well. Is working with the current company and they're barely gonna fit it in over the summer now. Is that correct?
The the biggest issue. Is if we don't do it this summer, then we need to plan it out, you know, at least a week where nobody's in the district. Every speaker has to be pulled up, pulled down, replaced, so it's just. Yeah, I can't do it with the classroom.
Or a Christmas game.
Yeah.
Yeah, just for the week.
Have off without students, Rick. Thanks.
Right, well, there is the option, though, Rick, we could do what we did earlier tonight where we could authorize a board member to review the bids. So if we get some bids in the next few weeks. We could have someone, uh, review them with administration. And then if the if the preferred vendor who's currently. Servicing our Bakey and Memorial PA systems is is competitive and we have the relationship, then. Then we got that bid comparison. So we could, we could do that.
Do we have to vote on, um, waiving the, uh, the, um. RFP?
Uh, yes, you have to vote on waiving the policy for the seventy-four.
I said my suggestion, Dawn, would be that we probably should do that first.
Okay.
And then maybe vote on everything like Tom is asking for.
Yeah.
That would just be my suggestion.
Or do we have to vote on it in the sense of?
To, we have to waive the policy. We have to waive the.
No, if 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 the board chooses to have one person be the point person.
Yeah.
Then you don't have to waive the policy. We'll get the.
I think he's asking if we just waive the policy and we say go ahead.
Yep.
Yeah, but that I just, I'm just saying.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't have a policy if we if we go that route. But we just waive it if we say, okay, we're happy with the relationship we have. We trust the work they've been doing.
Thank you.
And we want to just get this done because, um. I want to make it very clear. That there will be a policy coming before the board, um, where, um, it's cell phones. And we have to have a functional PA system. The first day of school, so students can hear every announcement and all that jazz. So, um, we need to make sure whatever we do, we have to have a clear PA system in place for day one.
Thank you.
Don't have the, you don't have the option to. So I think assuming the policy. Moves, but it's up to the board, but, um, that is something that needs to be taken into account that day one, we have to have a very functional PA system at the.
I really appreciate that, Dawn. I hadn't thought of that. That's a great point.
Well, you mean the approval threshold? Yeah, what I think is ten, so ten?
Is it?
It's twenty, but it, there's language that below twenty is recommended, so we kind of have a cutoff of. Five thousand is kind of like informal, but I also want to point out that, you know. Because the public may not know. This was actually just.
because the public may not know, this was actually discussed more thoroughly earlier in facilities and finance by half the members of the school board and some of the numbers were moved around. Um, you know, I'm not going to the detail now, but we had originally thought maybe something would be leased, but that turned out not to be uh financially sound and we we we're so.
Well, I think that, I mean, I think you should comment on the fact that we did move funds from, you know, things that were going to be taken from the general fund and took it out of facility use. I think you should mention that. Um, you know, I've been on the board for a few years now.
Yep.
I know that um this year year end spending spree that the prior boards have been accused of and some members on this board. Um, I think this shows that we're not trying to do that.
Yeah, no, and I.
Utilize refund that we possibly get.
Yep, to your point initially, uh, Mr. Angel and I had the P A system under leasing, lease financing because we thought we could roll it into the vent track. Uh, we got the um, the 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 uh quote back from um the municipal leasing company and uh the interest rate didn't go down. We thought maybe we could decrease the um the interest uh rate on the vent track by rolling this in, didn't affect it, so um, we decided earlier tonight in the facility made in the finance meeting that we would uh bump it over to general surplus. Um, the, yeah, camera servers were initially general surplus, but in order to maintain close to a hundred thousand dollars in the facilities revolving fund, we bumped that to the facility reserve, that facility use revolving fund from general fund, but moved and Gordon um, or was it switch? What did we move? I think it was, they had laptops.
This and this.
Yeah. I don't have my notes in front of me.
Lab PCs.
Yeah, so we, and again, this document updates in real time because we just have the formulas in there, so um, this is what we settled upon because originally the laptops were coming out of the facility use revolving fund. Um, the other thing is initially, because we didn't want to change the numbers, the initial numbers there were from a couple of weeks ago and Mr. Parks, Gordon Parks has um gotten uh updated quotes recently and 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 the costs went down, so um, you know, we we weren't going to change them. Mid midstream, we we waited till tonight to update the numbers, so numbers became more favorable um over the last few weeks for the district.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna say that the numbers, I believe, uh, was close to sixteen or seventeen thousand across the, all the Dell equipment.
Significant savings over a few weeks. It's amazing how much the prices went down.
That's awesome.
Can I be looking for a motion? Can I make a motion?
Yeah.
Can I make a motion to approve um this as written on here?
We should probably wait policy first. For bid to bid.
Oh, well, I was gonna say pending we get three bids in the last next two weeks and the facilities chair. We give the facilities chair the approval. Unless you guys want. I just don't wanna, I don't want to go around in circles like on this again like we did. I appreciate um, you guys brought back to us.
Yeah.
What we asked for at the last meeting, which was to put all these numbers in front of us and you've done that. And I just don't want to go around in circles again with with this whole thing because you you've done exactly what we asked you for.
This is great, and I love that you can really see um where everything's coming from in black and white, a lot easier when you put it in. Um, and to Rick's point in the last meeting, you know, we told the taxpayers that they were going to get back about a million dollars and we wanted to ensure that we were holding firm on that. Um, and this shows that they're actually still, fingers crossed, knock on wood, gonna get back more than a million dollars, even with all of these purchases that are necessary. Um, so I appreciate all the hard work that went into all of this, so thank you to everyone.
Can I just make a comment real quick too?
Absolutely.
Um, the switches with the E-rate, because of how we're trying to do it with end of year funds, the way E-rates cycle and and payments work, um, what we would eventually have to do is the total price is a hundred and sixty two thousand six hundred and thirty five dollars forty cents. We would have to pay that full amount and then after July first, then they issue a refund of the sixty two thousand seven hundred and seventy four dollars and fifty cents.
What was the total amount, Gordon? One hundred and sixty two thousand?
Hundred sixty two, six thirty five and forty cents.
So it's important to to just be aware that that money will come back, but the actual amount will probably end up being closer to this in the end, just to be transparent.
Yep.
So that that money that comes back would go back to taxpayers at the end of next year.
The end of next year. Yep. So.
We're gonna record a receivable for the forty nine thousand. So the net amount that we're gonna actually pay is a hundred and thirteen.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Matt.
Sixty two thousand is gonna be the.
Okay.
Yeah.
Wait, say that again?
Yeah.
Sixty two thousand seven hundred and seventy four dollars and fifty cents. That's what is coming back. It went up.
Thank you, Matt. So so the amount that was in there before was.
I was, I was originally told that it was only hardware that we were eligible for the E-rate. And when I got clarification, I got clarification that only about fifty seven hundred of that hundred and sixty two thousand was not eligible. So that forty percent was based off of just the hardware alone. For the original forty nine, so yeah, it's it's sixty two thousand, almost sixty three thousand back.
Yeah, so Gordon, for transparency, will you tell me the amount to put under the switch's line so that I'm sure that the amount in the total of the grant fund surplus is correct?
Yes, it'll be the one hundred and sixty two thousand.
Okay.
Six hundred and thirty five dollars and forty cents.
But Matt's saying that he's going to do a process to offset that.
A journal entry.
Yep.
Yeah, I think I think this confusion.
Know what the amount is that goes in here for the the return for the general sponsor.
So.
What's the end bottom dollar?
Type in.
It's it's gonna be less.
But yeah, type in it, um, a negative one sixty two, six thirty five, forty. And then plus. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we gotta do it somewhere else so it updates there.
What was it again? One six two?
One six two, six three five, four zero. One six two, uh, six three five.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then in that, in that formula, add sixty two thousand seven seventy four fifty. It's a Mac, sixty two thousand.
Was it?
So sixty two thousand seven hundred and seventy four. About fifty.
Fifty?
Yep.
Oops.
Oh, Lord.
It's a Mac.
Oh, I love watching you suffer.
Yeah, where's your formula bar?
I don't know.
You need to put in equal sign.
Mr. Malala is gonna fix it.
Get a calculator out and doing it right now.
Yeah, thanks, Rick.
Ninety nine thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars and ninety cents.
There, you know, enter. There you go.
There it is, Rick. Ninety nine thousand eight hundred.
So now with that.
There we go.
Thank you.
This changes everything.
Is that next? Okay.
There, it just went up.
They know that?
Yay.
Dom, thank you for clarifying.
So I.
Thank you, Eric.
Yep, you know, I'm think, from what I'm hearing about the cell phone policy, what I'm hearing about the chances of us getting bids and getting this done
before the start of the school year, I'd like a motion to waive uh the policy regarding um bids.
Three bids.
P A system. I don't know the policy number offhand, but.
D J A.
D J E.
D J E R A.
E.
E.
D J E, I make a policy, I make a motion to
Wave.
Wave, thank you, uh, policy D J E.
For the.
P A.
P A system.
The P A system.
Second.
All right, any further discussion on that motion? All in favor? So, are you, sorry. Okay, so two, three, four, five in favor, uh, not in favor? Rick, okay, um.
Not in favor of waiving the policy.
I know.
Yeah.
I know, I I I'm not a big fan either, but given timing.
It's happening too often.
Noted. Um. All right, so would anyone like to move?
I make a motion to approve the technology items as written in the spec.
Any further discussion?
One question.
Yep.
The laptops, the fifty laptops, the cost of the sixty four reflects the protection plan as well as the cost, or is it separate?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Protection plan on those?
Yes.
And that's, that sixty four reflects that cost?
Yes, yep, there's a three year, just pulling it up now. There's a lot of. Three year, um, next day. Warranty on them.
All right, any further discussion?
Yes, very quick.
Yep.
Um, I just want to say thank you, Gordon. There is a ton of work that goes behind the scenes into this. Um, it's a lot of legwork and I know you spend copious amounts of not only finding this information for us, but making our current systems work, and I just want to say thank you. It's a lot of work and you do yeoman's work for this district, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I would echo that Gordon spent many weekends at the schools when the servers got.
Yes.
To make sure that school was up and running Monday and I am incredibly grateful myself, so thank you, Gordon.
Thank you.
Like, did you have a comment?
Nope.
Okay.
That was great.
All right, uh, all in favor? Unanimous.
There's one more item we have to talk about on your lease because that was not included in this grid and it is a separate item.
Yep.
And it's not out of year end spending, already budgeted, so it's a separate item, so I'll have Gordon handle that.
And the SOFOs renewal, two more.
Yep, the SOFOs renewal.
That's far.
Yes.
It's not gonna stay. So we went out to bid, um, three years are up with uh our current fleet with uh budget document technology. Um, in those three years, just a little recap, we eliminated the majority of the laser jet printers that are throughout the district, which saved us a ton of money on toner. Um, and then with the uh, the start of the new copiers, we implemented Paper Cut, which allows us to lock printing for staff and students and and it reduces a lot of waste, gives us a lot of reporting. So uh, we went out to bid and um asked to continue using Paper Cut. And we got seven different companies and two of those companies submitted multiple bids, so total of nine bids. Um. Budget document technology uh is our preferred choice. Uh, there was one other vendor that was a little cheaper, uh, not by much, but a tiny bit cheaper, but they're out of Burlington. Um, where budget document technology has offices in Manchester and in uh it was Amesbury. So they're, they're often, you know, passing by the the district and if there's an open ticket, they'll stop, take care of it, so their service has been uh really reliable. Um, so I am asking for approval to go a additional three years with budget document technology. Um, this will include a whole new fleet of basically the same machines we have now, just brand new.
It's important to remember this is not coming out of year end funds. This is already budgeted. That's why I separated that from previous conversation.
I'd like to make a motion uh to approve moving forward with budget document technology for our coming contract.
Second.
Jinx.
You get to choose, Phyllis.
I didn't actually finish the word.
Get him for the, you get him for the rest of the night.
I got you.
Uh, any discussion?
Really, Rick?
Yeah, one question. Um, the budget document technology, the service price still says three months, six thousand seven hundred and forty four dollars.
Correct, they bill us annually, so when they, when they did the bid, they they basically submitted it like how we're currently using them, where everybody else just did monthly.
Yeah, but this, the way, so I guess my question is, this sixty seven forty four is the annual charge, but they're billing it every three months?
The sixty seven forty four is just their service portion, so it's that times four. And then the additional twenty six thousand two hundred and fifty is the hardware lease.
Okay, they're just doing a quarterly bid.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so that that sixty seven forty four includes our um, you know, one fourth allotment of black and white printouts, color printouts.
I I read it.
Okay.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yep.
Any further discussion or any other questions? All right, all in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
All right, and.
Then we just have the SOFOs renewal.
Yep.
So this is um a combination of our firewalls, our antivirus, um, our encryption and um includes um new firewalls as well. So our existing firewalls, just like, you know, anything, they get end of life, they stop supporting them. So this particular um renewal is going to prevent um, come April, our existing firewalls are are end of life. So what basically happens come there is any exploits, anything found, you you don't get any patches. So this uh, this renewal includes new hardware for all four buildings, the three schools and uh S A U office and its uh support with that hardware. On top of our uh server protection, our laptop protection and encryption for the laptops as well. Um, and it's a three year uh paid annually twenty eight thousand four hundred and four dollars um, for the next three years.
Is is there a cloud component to these or is it all on premise?
It's all on premise, other than, well, I mean, the the only thing is is the firewalls. You know, hardware wise.
Yeah.
Everything else, software installed on on machines. Um, but yeah, they they sit, you know, at the very front of all the equipment.
Gordon, we got to be clear here. It looks like uh you're also requesting the policy D J E be waived. I think if you're requesting that, you should probably highlight those items of why.
Oh yeah, I forgot this one was.
Yep.
When we were looking at this particular um proposal, the the problem with it is it's it's a renewal.
Yeah.
And does it fit policy D J E? So we're kind of going like it fits, but it's a renewal of our current service. See, the problem is it's it's a three year, a new three year contract extending an old three year contract.
So let let me, let me give some context. I'm sorry, it's been, I've helped Gordon with these for about five weeks and I've read them all, but I forgot that this one. So this is the question. Do we need to get bids for every piece of software that we use in the district every time they need to be renewed? Because if we do, I need three more tech people. I can't do that. We we just had a renewal. I signed the renewal for uh, um the software for our our.
Alma?
Yeah, for Alma, for the software for the student information system. We've been with Alma, we're not going to change Alma. That's a multi-year, multi- it it disrupts the whole functioning of the whole district to change on.
Is D J E not?
I I I don't believe that D J E really applies to this policy, but to this process for for uh something like an already existing firewall software that we're utilizing.
Mr. Price escalation?
The, not by much.
And there will be with Alma too.
Right, but the price for Alma goes up some. But you you can't, uh, there's no way I'd recommend renew, re-changing our student information system every couple of years. I mean, that's crazy. That's, you're talking about like hundreds of thousands of dollars in manpower to change the S I S system. Yeah, I don't care if the bids half.
It's like trying to replace the nervous system.
Right, right, and and firewalls are the same thing, like Gordon, the amount of hardware, software and systems Gordon would have to replace to change our software company, it's completely.
Something like this, you know, come end of school year, we'd have to tell all the staff, you gotta leave your laptops. We'd have to.
Yeah, we'd have to.
Them all with all.
Laptops in the district. It's massive. So I I don't believe that extending the existing service. It it, there's a point, I don't know where the cut point is. Right? The cut point is the cut point for um, for Microsoft Office. If we have a subscription to Microsoft Office and everyone, I'm not saying that we are, I'm I'm asking. Where where are the cut points for this?
Yeah, I um, probably won't let go of that, say that.
I'm sure.
Yeah. If there's price escalation and we have, and we have.
Um, i- if there's price escalation and we have, and we have standing. You know. Rule that we're supposed to follow, then we should follow that rule.
So you're saying that for every software?
You're not letting me finish.
No, I'm asking.
If the, if the rule needs to be adjusted, then that's what we should be talking about.
Okay.
But we have a rule in place that says we should be doing something. There's price escalation here.
Where's D J?
So essentially you should be getting bids for it. I'm not, I not disagreeing with you.
Yeah.
Saying, maybe we have to look at the rule.
Yeah, I, I actually agree with you one hundred percent.
Yeah.
I think it's great.
It's already, it's already. Says when feasible. Right in the first line, right? All contracts and purchases of supplies, materials, equipment, yada, 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 in excess of twenty thousand dollars shall be based when feasible.
I think when I was policy chair, we changed that for this.
Yeah.
Because we knew that it wasn't always feasible for, for situations like this, we want.
Right. I, I just want to be transparent that I don't know where the lines are. And I think Rick's saying the same thing. Actually, for this one, I agree with you. I, you're right on, Rick.
I mean, I'd argue feasible three years time is feasible. You have three years to make a plan on this and to get bids within a three year contract period.
Well, but he, so here's, here's the question, and I'm not disagreeing with that. I agree with you completely. I think that the question is. Do you, so do we say to Gordon, do one more year with SOFOs and do bids for next year?
I, I'm not saying we give any more work to Gordon at all. That's, my point is I think we need to revisit what we're talking about.
You mean the policy?
Hundred percent.
I agree completely. Yep.
So. Really gonna follow it or not?
Right. Well, the policy.
I think it's more.
It's inherently gray. It's not dialed in.
Correct. That's what I'm.
But, but it's not dialed in for a reason and it has written in the policy that the board can waive it at any time. So by waiving it, you're following it. So I think it's important to recognize that the policy recognizes the complexities of situations and the purchasing and the issues. And allows you as a board, the option to waive it. It actually says in the policy.
The last line is the Sanborn Regional School Board reserves great to weigh at the bid.
At any time.
So then our other policies don't all say that. We have.
Exactly.
Because I agree with what Rick was saying. I was uneasy about, and that was why my original motion. That I was going to put forth for the seventy five thousand for the P A system was. I just to not waive the policy, but like, hey, can we get stuff in in the next couple of weeks? Cause I thought that was a big amount. Um, and I could, Rick, we keep waiving the policy, but. And how are we going to apply that to other things that happened in the district of, oh, you guys always waive policies, so you can just waive this, but. It, this policy actually states to this, this, the policy we keep leaving is this policy. It's the same policy we keep weaving. So. And if it does say that, and it, I, I feel a little bit more comfortable now. And there has to be a legitimate reason. I mean, that's why we have discussion about this is, does it make sense to waive the policy? And, you know, in this situation, we're talking about. Software and the ungodly amount of. Sorry, I thought I turned that up.
I think, is that the timer for?
That's the timer for it. That's the timer to go home. Um.
My time to go.
I think that, um, you know, we're talking about software. We're talking about ungodly amount of man hours to, you know, install brand new software. When we know the software works, it, it, you know, has done a great job. Gordon likes it. You know, I, I, I feel comfortable. Um.
This is the kind of situation where if there was a significant price increase. We would maybe say, all right, it's worth pushing the envelope.
Right. If there's a, it's threshold for, and that's where the policy could maybe be a little more clear about bids. It's like, okay, and, and for our software renewals, if they're.
The last time I remember, we, we really had a good argument to waive the policy was the water. We had somebody that came.
Yes.
Presented.
Yes.
He said, I'm not going to be the cheapest.
Right.
Told us why.
Yep.
He was somebody that worked.
Right.
He runs our water system.
And like that, that, I, you know, I can get behind all day long.
Absolutely.
If we're not even looking, this isn't our money. I mean, it's, it's our money, but it's not our money. It's, it's, it's the community's money. And like. For these big ticket items, I have a problem with not doing something.
What, can you define, just to help me with the future policy? What is, uh, twenty eight thousand dollars a year on a forty eight million dollar, forty million dollar budget? Is that a big ticket?
I didn't, I didn't make that policy.
No, no, but you, but you just said big ticket item. I'm trying to figure out in my head. I'm asking sincerely, what is the line?
The line right now is twenty grand. This is far over that line.
Twenty eight.
That's my problem.
Ri- right. I understand. It, and, and I'm trying to understand. What we should do as a group, because I think that what we need to do is have a conversation about the policy.
I agree.
I, I agree with you completely on this, Rick, that we should talk about it because I think for software renewals and things that are incredibly disruptive.
Yes.
To the functioning of the district.
Yeah.
We shouldn't even have to have the conversation about waiving the policy. Like I, I have no one, it, it, the state of New Hampshire uses Alma for all of their reporting now. Why would I waste the time of going to bids for a, a student information system? And then ask you to waive a policy for a system that integrates with the state of New Hampshire. It's a waste of our time.
There's two things, two approaches we could take. One is. Creating exceptions for things like Alma.
Right.
Right? Or firewall protection or make it a proactive thing that with certain things that would be a huge pain to replace, we go out to bid well in advance. Of when a contract is going to expire, so we have time to prepare for it. Right? Like with, with things like this, where ripping the spine out and putting a new one in is, you know, a ridiculous.
And I think you said, really enough. If it's, if there's such a savings where we would have a further discussion.
Right.
And at least we're, we're having those discussions.
I like that. I agree with that, Rick.
We're just not having.
Yeah, I think it's a matter of due diligence on behalf of the taxpayer. I'm not in favor of changing this system at all. However, it would be great to be able to say to the taxpayer, hey, there's also a couple of bids out there and they were, you know, five hundred this way, five hundred that way. This is why we continue. It's just the due diligence on behalf of the taxpayer.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep. So, so the question for tonight is, because we, we probably won't, we need to have a policy meeting. I need to have our attorney review D J E because it's a very technical policy. Um, I would want to make sure that we get recommendations that are, that keep an eye on law in, in the RSA's, right? Um, I, I'm happy to do that work. I like policy work and I'm happy to do it. But I think the question for Gordon is, um, Gordon has to have the firewalls. We, we could authorize him to do a one year. We could authorize him to do the three year for tonight and waive the policy, but I just want to, just to be transparent. The policy says the board has the right.
Yep.
To waive the policy for these person, these purposes. You're not doing.
Yep.
Anything.
I don't even think it needs to be waived. I don't know that it actually applies. Cause it says when feasible. That's the thing.
Yeah.
Right? It's, it's not feasible.
It's not feasible to do it right now before the start of the next.
Right.
Well, can I make a comment too?
Yeah.
So in this, in the situation, and this has come up before with like Dell. Um. Most big companies, so Dell, SOFOs, you get, you get to choose like your preferred vendor. So with SOFOs, it's Trabron, with Dell, it's New Era. So the same thing with. This renewal, I tried to get multiple SOFOs quotes to show something and SOFO was like, no. We're, we're working with Trabron. Why are we going to provide and waste our time providing you with the same quote at a higher price? So that's the struggle. When it comes to these renewals, you know, same thing as like Microsoft, we use Microsoft. Uh, server, we use Windows eleven office. There's no other option for Microsoft other than Microsoft. So this kind of falls in the, the, the only way to actually do this in, in the sense of getting three quotes is. Legitimate three completely different companies and solutions. For antivirus encryption, firewalls, even, you know, our wireless is SOFOs. So now we're looking, will our wireless work without, you know, the SOFOs firewall? So there's a lot. You know, the new switches that, you know, were proposed today. So there's a lot that's involved with it.
Right.
Yeah. So we don't need to waive the policy.
Right.
Let's continue.
Okay, you good? It, yeah, it's important though. This is an important conver- we've been talking about this for three weeks. Like what, what are the, what are the lines?
This isn't what I was talking about in the other meeting. The other meeting, we didn't get the bids. We didn't get the chance to negotiate. We didn't get the chance to leverage anything, right? That, that annoys me.
Yeah, that's okay.
So this is, there's no way I'm going to ask him to do that work because it'll never happen.
Right.
Right. You, you've done everything we've asked you to do, right? So like my contention here has nothing to do with you, just so you know.
No, no, I get it.
Outstanding, yeah. With, with labeling and, and, you know, implementing everything we asked you to do. I just, this, this policy is annoying.
Yeah, let's adjust it.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's fix it. Yep. Yep. So Rick, I'll work with you. We'll come up with a draft.
I think we need to work.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'll work with you and then I'll come up with a draft to bring to the policy committee. And then it'll go through the proper channels, but it's okay to draft and have conversation. I, I'm agreeing with you. I think, and it's bothered me for a long time because it's not, there needs to be a specific component to the policy for software. Right? And, and that, it's a special group.
Well, this connects to interoperability, right?
Yes.
So you can't have this software and then have this contract and then put this out to bid when none of it fits here.
Yeah, Gordon and I had a lot of really good philosophical, philosophical conversations about this and Gordon's such a, uh, um. A thorough and attentive person that he's asked a lot of thought provoking questions about where these lines are over the last five weeks. It's been great.
Mm hmm.
And, and I, I'm saying I don't even know where they are. I think we're ready to move on us.
Yeah.
Be doing the switch and the renewal together or are those separate? We already did the switches.
Which is already.
Already did.
Oh, the, oh, yeah, heard of the, oh, yeah.
Yeah, the.
Familiar. The, just the, uh, it's just the renewal.
And the copier. Copiers and, uh.
I think we. We did the copier. Approved.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, that's right. I remember.
Motion.
Been a long night.
We have not. Motion to, um, approve the SOFOs renewal.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Gordon.
Great job. Thank you.
And I love the way this is all laid out. Like, this is. I really liked the spreadsheet. Yeah. That was put together. That was really. Thank you so much. I know it was a ton of work. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon.
All right. That's done. Policies. Who wants to keep going?
I, I would recommend unless someone has a specific question about one of the three policies, the board could just move all three.
Does everybody review the policies and is everyone comfortable with them?
I'll make that. This was about changing the school times?
Yeah.
Boy, you're on fire tonight.
I woke up.
How long do you?
Suddenly I was awake.
Sheesh.
Oh, gosh. I'll make a motion to approve and move all three policies. Second. All right. Um, just to clarify for the people watching, we are talking about I C school year. I J L library media center materials selections and adoption. Uh, I J L dash R media deselection and discarding policy. Um. There any? Any discussion? We good to move? All right.
Can I get, can I get thirty seconds?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Um, oh, and just, um, the comment that was made, um, for I J L, the library media center material selection and adoption. Um, the recommendation that the policy subcommittee made, um, that was noted, uh, to be not added to the policy, but to put into practice. Was, um, cause in there it states, you know, buying, you know. Different perspectives on different topics. Um, and so for clarity, when especially like when it comes to the board for approval. If those items could be purchased together.
On one P O.
On one. One, on one manifest, also that you could see that. And if they already have in the library here, there is a perspective, but not multiple perspectives. And they want to buy other books. Or they already have a couple, but they want to add another one, um, to just make a note to say, already have these books, um, and just rounding out the selection. I just appreciated that in I J L that we validated the specialty of our librarians and the knowledge and their expertise. I don't think people realize like librarians have to, they, a lot of them go to school for a very long time to be able to do this. Like this is, it, it's a science. It's an expertise. Um, I know there are many districts that are getting rid of their librarians. So I'm very grateful that as a district, we're supporting, we're supporting them. I know I will, I, when I heard that too, I was.
Hmm, it's not good.
Especially when you want to teach the art of reading.
Mm hmm. Sitting in the space for choice. Okay, thank you.
Uh, all in favor? Unanimous. Fabulous. That was easier than I thought. Okay, second public comment. Since there is no public here, we will move on. Um, next Sanborn Regional School Board meeting will be held on Wednesday, August twenty first, twenty twenty four at six P M in the library at the Sanborn Regional School District.